Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you for being here tonight. For those who are watching on TV or listening to us on air. I'm Mayor Scott Voits, and I'm pleased to be the mayor for the city of Lake Forest, one of the safest cities in the state of California. And so tonight, we'll have Sergeant Kiltz lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sergeant. We know Lake Forest is one of the safest cities in the state of California. And the Stay Safe Program campaign provides residents information and special tools and programs that can make us even safer than we already are. We're honored tonight to have members of the new Orange County Sheriff's Department Bureau of Behavioral Health, the Health Bureau, Behavioral Health Bureau. Bureau Captain Nate Wilson will explain what makes this Bureau special, and it works and is working throughout Orange County. So all of Orange County will be using it. The specially trained members deal with homeless individuals and other mentally health issues, drug addiction. So homeless, if you see it, we've been complaints in all the cities because it's not only in Lake Forest, not only in Santa Ana, but it's throughout the county of Orange. It's a national crisis, and I think that we're taking these steps to try to help people get back on the streets, as you will see tonight. With the captain tonight is Sergeant from the Southeast Homeless Outreach Team, Christopher Kiltz, Southeast Homeless Outreach Member Guy Lemieux, and Lake Forest Behavioral Liaison Officer Deputy Sergeant Castro. They'll share their thoughts and answers, questions during this town hall. I'd like to also acknowledge our Mayor Pro Tem, Robert Patenio, a retired Lake Forest deputy, who was the actual first homeless liaison deputy for the county of Orange, because our city actually was the first to actually hire a deputy to be a homeless liaison officer. So his background in law enforcement in the Marine Corps will be such a benefit to the city, but the fact is in tonight's discussion, because he has firsthand knowledge and is actually a city council member. So let's first say welcome to everybody. Thank you guys for coming, and I want to turn it over to Sergeant, Captain.
Thank you very much. Captain Nate Wilson, I'm here today to talk to you guys about the department's new Behavioral Health Bureau. Back when Don Barnes ran for sheriff, one of his initiatives was dealing with mental health and expanding mental health services for the residents of Orange County. And so when that happened, he became sheriff, and then late last year, November, December, is when this Bureau was actually created. And so I'm going to go through today what this Bureau is and what our responsibilities are and what we provide for the residents of Orange County. So the Behavioral Health Bureau stands on three foundational pillars. CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Training, Mental Health Response, and Integrated Services. So the state of California requires that law enforcement officers receive three hours of mental health training. The sheriff has committed to sending all of our sworn staff to a minimum of 16 hours of mental health training. In addition to that, 25% of our deputies will receive a full 40 hours of mental health training. Now, the deputies that are identified as receiving that training are all of what we used to call homeless liaison officers, which are now referred to as behavioral health liaisons, any deputies working in positions where they're going to have increased contact with individuals that may be experiencing a mental health crisis, and deputies working in our jail in our mental health modules. So as I just spoke about, in our department, we had what was once called an HLO, or homeless liaison officer. Now, those deputies, through our experience, we found that a majority of the homeless individuals that we deal with either have mental health issues, are substance dependent, or suffer from a combination of both. And so cognizant of that, we, the sheriff's department, committed to sending all of our, what used to be known as HLOs, to 40 hours of CIT training as a standard part of what they received. And then they also received eight hours of HLO, or homeless liaison officer, training. With them now becoming designated as behavioral health liaisons, in addition to their 40 hours of CIT training, they receive a full 40 hours of homeless outreach training, and they receive ongoing monthly training in mental health. So they learn how to identify mental health crisis, de-escalate the situation, and then link those individuals with services. And that training is received through an ongoing partnership with the healthcare agency. PERT, which is something that's been down here in South County for quite some time, which was known as the Psychiatric Emergency Response Team. In its original form, what would happen is the healthcare agency would provide us with the clinician, and we would put that clinician in a patrol car with a deputy, and that deputy would go into service. And then during his shift, if a mental health call came out, that deputy would respond to that call with the clinician, and the clinician would be on scene and available to address that part of the call. What we found, because the way we're set up with the sheriff's department is we have multiple contract cities. So if that clinician is assigned with a deputy in a particular contract city, they could not leave because they're contractually obligated to stay there. So if the deputy was with, let's say, a deputy in Mission Viejo, and a mental health call came out in Lake Forest, that deputy could not come over here to provide that service. And so what we've done is made it a regional model. So a deputy that's assigned to the Behavioral Health Bureau will take that clinician, and they can go anywhere in South Orange County. They're not required to stay in one particular contract city. And what we've also done is we've added in case management. So instead of being purely reactionary to where we're only going out when people are actually experiencing a crisis, what we do now is we go through all of our calls for service, and we look for incidents, or locations, or individuals that we respond to frequently on multiple occasions. And we'll put together a case file on all of our experiences with that person, call logs, any crime reports that may have been written, and we'll actually sit down with the clinician and go through these cases. And there is stuff that we don't know about these individuals in the mental health care side of the house, and so we're able to provide what we know to the healthcare clinician, and they can look up in their system and see if this is somebody that they're aware of, that they can reconnect with, or if it's somebody that they're not aware of, then what we'll do is the deputy and the clinician will go out together and proactively contact those individuals to get them linked with services. The idea being we avoid the crisis ever occurring by getting these people into the system. Because what we found is there's a disconnect, and so we hope by doing this, we're able to bridge those people with the appropriate services. And the next thing is analytics. And I talked about the fact that we're going through our cases and looking for individuals that would benefit from case management, but what we're also doing is critiquing our response to those types of calls. And so when somebody is experiencing a crisis, and they need to be placed on a hold, which most people have heard of as a 5150, which means people are placed on a 72-hour hold, they're placed into a hospital where they're evaluated because either they're danger themselves, a danger to others, or they're gravely disabled. And so what we were finding is, you know, the deputies are placing people on holds. There are ways that we could have handled the call more, in a better way, or we could have written the hold more appropriately. And so we go through and critique all of our actions so we can improve, and then we provide that feedback to the deputies. And what we're also doing is collecting statistics on all of our calls for service that relate to mental health. So we now add a disposition to those calls, so we're able to actually pull those out and look at, you know, how much time we're spending on mental health calls. Are there areas where we can improve in services that we provide for these individuals? So if you look at the diagram that's up behind me right now, this is what our response model looks like without the creation of this Bureau. So a call for service comes out, an individual calls 911, hey, a family member of mine is experiencing a crisis, I need help. So dispatch will create a call for service, and they'll send out any deputy that's available for a call. So the deputy arrives on scene, and they essentially have three options. Either the person's committed a crime, and we can arrest them and take them to jail, or the person meets a criteria for 5150, which is very specific. They have to be a threat to themselves, a threat to others, or gravely disabled. If they do not meet any of that criteria, and they haven't committed a crime, so we have no reason to arrest them, we simply walk away. There's no connection with services. And these are the people that you'll see, you know, wandering around on the side of the road, talking to themselves, that it's obvious to us that they need some type of help, but when we get sent to those types of calls, there's nothing we can do. We simply have to walk away unless, like I said, they've committed a crime, or they reached the level of being placed on a hold. And so what we're doing is working to change that model. And so what we've created is what's called a steering committee. And so CIT, that we talked about before, which is the Crisis Intervention Training, the next component of that is what's called the Crisis Intervention Team. And so the steering committee, which I head with a member of HCA, we actually brought in a bunch of stakeholders. So we have NAMI, Orange County, we have hospitals, we have the fire department, we have ambulance companies, mental health professionals, that all sit on this committee, and what we're doing is looking for a better way to respond to people that are experiencing a mental health crisis. And so when you look at the options now, instead of it just being walking away, we have the ability to link people with services and access a more robust variety of services for these individuals. And whichever one of these paths that you take on this map, it always ends with people being entered into case management. So it's no longer a system of just walking away and these people never getting linked with services. So this steering committee is ongoing right now. We're trying to lay out the plan for Orange County, and then the hope is we can then go to the board of supervisors and say, look, this is what everybody in the room who has a stake in this game feels is the most appropriate response for Orange County, and then hopefully we can get the logistical support to make this happen. So another thing that the Behavioral Health Bureau does is we participate in several different things that are going on in the county. Something new that's popped up is BeWell, which is a new facility that's up in the city of Orange, and this is a public-private partnership where hospitals and also the county are investing in a facility that is a crisis stabilization unit. So people that are being placed on 5150 holds or want to voluntarily be taken somewhere for treatment, they offer those services, and they also offer the first-of-its-kind sobering center. So when we run across somebody who's intoxicated on the side of the road, or wherever they may be, and they can't be left alone, our option right now is either they get arrested on a 647F, which is a drunken public, or we take them to a hospital, or we have to leave them in the care of a responsible party if we can find one. What this does is gives us a location that we can take them, instead of arresting them, we take them here, they're able to sober up, they're able to provide them the opportunity to get into long-term treatment if they so decide to do that. If not, once they're sobered, that facility will actually transport them back to where they were picked up. So it's a great service for Orange County. They're actually going to be expanding. They're looking at building another facility down here in South Orange County, and then there'll be another one in West County. So there'll be regional centers available for all of the residents of Orange County. And our Bureau was involved with the BeWell Center from its beginning. We helped develop their policies and procedures, because this facility is designed for law enforcement, for us to have somewhere to take these people to get them services. And they're set up in a way where law enforcement is in and out of the door in under 15 minutes. So it's been a great resource for us and a great resource for the people that we're bringing there. The other thing we're doing is here at Orange County, people have heard of the Social Security Administration, there's CalFresh, there's a bunch of different providers of services for the residents of Orange County, but those services do not talk to each other, they're very siloed. And so the county came up with a program to integrate all of those services and create what they call a virtual client record, so that these people could be case managed. So that way, if I'm working for CalFresh, I know that person is also receiving some type of housing services, or they're receiving some type of mental health services, so that I can do a better job of making sure these people are taken care of. So the Behavioral Health Bureau participates in that program, because our deputies that go out in the field, we actually have an application that we use when we contact the homeless in order to offer them outreach services, take down their information, and that is pushed to the healthcare agency. Well, that information now is uploaded into that integrated system, so that the other providers can also see who these people are that we're contacting and where they're currently located, so they can reconnect with them and make sure that they continue to receive And so at its core, really what we're doing is looking at providing better services for the residents of Orange County, and really connecting all of these fragmented services and making sure that we're not just walking away that these people are taken care of. And that's really the goal of the Behavioral Health Bureau. So when you look at your, what used to be known as HLOs, now known as behavioral health liaisons, they still have the responsibility, responsibility of addressing homeless issues, so they still have that responsibility, that has not been taken away from them. All it is now is we've added on the component of that additional mental health training, and they are designated in their city so that if another deputy gets dispatched to a mental health-related call, that they can respond and assist that deputy in navigating that problem, and be able to de-escalate it and link those people with services. And our hope is that our co-responder team, where we have that clinician and deputy together, that we'll be able to expand that service out to where it's a seven-day-a-week operation, and they're regionally deployed throughout the county, so that when those calls do come out, the clinician is on scene immediately with the deputy. The idea being we want to remove law enforcement as much as we can. We'd love to say we're 100% removed from it, but that's not going to happen, just because of the fact that when people are in crisis, the first thing they do is dial 911. And so we need to make sure there's a system in place that we get them linked with the appropriate service when that happens. So that, in a nutshell, is what the Behavioral Health Bureau is, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the Bureau itself.
Yes, sir. Thank you first. Joe Ford, I live in Fort Hills, right? So for the training that the deputies get, sir, who does that training?
So we have, there's two different trainings that these deputies receive, or actually three. So the homeless outreach training, which is the 40-hour class that they attend, that is put on by this Bureau. So myself, several of the sergeants in the Bureau, and then we also bring in the district attorney's office, we bring in county council, we bring in the outreach providers. County health comes in to teach different segments of the class. But all of our courses are approved by California's POST, which oversees all of the training and certifies the training for law enforcement officers in California. So that is that training class. The CIT training, which is also POST-certified, is taught by certified CIT instructors. They are deputies, sergeants, that work within our department, and also individuals from HCA and other contracted groups that provide that training. And then the ongoing training that the deputies receive on a monthly basis, the training we've had so far, we've had CHOC come out, doctors from CHOC come out and do instruction on autism, we've had HCA come out and do training. So it's a variety of professionals that deal with that area.
Captain, I actually have a question. How soon should the public expect to see results from this new Bureau and the training? Is it instantaneous, or will it take a while to get into the culture?
So we've already started to see results. There's been several high-profile cases that we've run across where we've received referrals from a variety of sources. The FBI actually works with us now, because, you know, you have to think entities like that, where they're looking for threats, you know, they're gathering information, and they'll come across individuals who they know have a mental health issue, they're not at the level of committing a crime, but then who do they connect them with? And so we are now that entity, so they will notify us of an individual, and then we'll sit down with our clinician, we'll build the case together, and then we'll conduct that follow-up to link that person with services. The other thing that we're doing now is when there are people that do commit crimes that have underlying mental health issues, and they do end up going to jail, what we do is we make sure that all that information about their mental health that occur out here gets delivered to the jail, because there is a Behavioral Health Bureau component that's in custody. And so we hand that information off to them, and they make sure that the mental health staff in the custody setting receives that information so that person gets treatment while they're in custody, and then we're notified on the backend when they get released, so that we can reconnect them with services on the outside. So there are already people benefiting from this. We've had hundreds of people that we've already done case management on, and it's a really good system. It's just we need more resources to make sure that this is done on a daily basis. But, you know, you rely upon HCA to have to hire more clinicians, we need more deputy positions to have those individuals dedicated to that seven days a week.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ann Owens. So the closest overhouse you can take people to is where?
City of Orange.
Orange. And you said they're working on building one in South Orange County eventually?
Mm-hmm.
And that will be funded by whom?
So it's funded from a combination, it's public-private partnership. So there's funding coming from the county and also from partner hospitals.
Okay. So that would serve South Orange County, which would be obviously, is obviously needed.
Yeah.
As well, right, okay. So would this be like board of supervisors money they have?
I'm not sure. I can't speak for the county on how these funds will be funneled into this program. I do know that they contributed money to the North Orange County location, and they know how successful it's been. So they are very, very supportive of this program. So, you know, I can't speak for them, but I can tell you that they do like the program and they are very supportive of it. So the South County campus will happen. It's, I think they're looking at about a one-to-two-year out before it's up and running.
Nate, if I can just follow up on that question, is the county is spending about $900,000 on the homeless component, and I know this is much bigger than the homeless component, but there are cities that spend a billion dollars on homelessness. I think the county, or the supervisor should spend some money on this component, because as I know, and as they know, homelessness, half the battle is it's either substance abuse or mental health issues. So Seattle, Los Angeles, and San Francisco spend a billion dollars a year on the homelessness. And here in the county, I think it was, they just passed $937,000 last year for some housing. So I think this thing does need to be subsidized.
Yeah, one thing that people need to remember is, you know, right now you hear the talk about housing, 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 we need to build more housing, we need to build more housing, but it's not just about the housing. You need to really address the underlying factors. What's causing these people to be homeless? What causes them to continue to be homeless? You can ask any of these deputies that deal with these people on a daily basis, there's a large portion of them that are service-resistant. They want to keep living on the street, well, why is that? And so that's when you start looking at the mental health, the substance abuse. So if we can start to address those things, we can start to reduce that population and get them to start utilizing that housing that's coming online.
I have a question in terms of the coverage. My question is in terms of coverage. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so 168 hours, working hours in a week, homeless liaison now, it's one, maybe it's more, but it used to be 40 hours a week. So with vacations, we need five or six guys. What is, how many homeless liaison officers do we have in Lake Forest, and how many do you plan on hiring when this thing gets totally implemented?
So I'm not going to speak for your chief of police, and that's something for him in the city to discuss about staffing for Lake Forest. I can tell you that for the sheriff's department, we have nearly 50 behavioral health liaisons, formerly known as HLOs, that operate throughout the county. And that we also have a homeless outreach team for Southeast operations, which includes Lake Forest, and that's who these deputies are here. You have two of them that are assigned here to Lake Forest, and Sergeant Chris Kiltz oversees the team that services Southeast operations.
We'll talk more specifically about Lake Forest and its homeless issues. With the captain here, we want to talk about the overview of the new Bureau and how it operates, but we'll have the deputies after the captain be really, and of course, Mayor Pro Tem, Patenio, to really talk about homeless issues and the philosophy and attack in the city. So questions for the captain, sort of the overview, go ahead, sir.
Wally Thomas. Let's say I want to get drunk on the beach on Labor Day, how do I get taken to the BeWell Center instead of jail?
So what we've been doing, so I told you, we were part of the process in the very beginning about developing the procedures and the policies, and then part of that was then training other law enforcement agencies in Orange County about the facility and what resources it provides. And so we've gone out and trained all of the agencies up in North Orange County, which is what the facility was primarily designated to service, was the north part of the county. And then the sheriff's department, because of the fact we're a partner with them, the entire sheriff's department is able to refer in to BeWell. So it's a resource that we use. Not all of the cities in Orange County have access to that facility yet, just because its capacity cannot reach that level.
The [inaudible] specifically that you're looking for on the scene?
So on the scene, if we run across somebody who's intoxicated, they have to be nonviolent, and they've got to be willing to go there to sober up. So if it's somebody who's a combative drunk, we're not taking them to BeWell. It's for people that are drunk but want to go somewhere to sober up, we'll give them a ride up there. They're given a cot to go lay on, they've got showers, they've got food, drinks for them, so they can basically sleep it off, and then they can transport them back to where they came from, and they do not have to go to jail. And that's the idea behind that place. That's one thing they've asked of us, is if we're going to take them to BeWell, we don't write them a ticket, because it's an alternative. Hey, would you rather go somewhere and just sober up, because we don't want to take you to jail if you just need to go sober up?
At one point, I was a mandated reporter, and I issued, I initiated the 5150s, and specifically it was related, often related to mental illness, some form of dementia. Question then is, how does this program relate to someone with dementia?
So dementia is a different thing. Dementia is not considered a mental health problem, it's considered a medical issue when you talk to the mental health community. And so we can't place somebody on a 5150 hold for dementia, per se. With that case, we would take them to a hospital to receive treatment for the dementia. So that's one of the things that we've learned as we dove deeper into this, is differentiating different types of illnesses. And so dementia is a separate thing.
Any other questions for the captain? I'll start back here and work my way down.
Hi, Captain. My name is Rafael Gonzalez, I'm a 30-year resident of Lake Forest. And my question is related to how can we expect a difference in a mental health call from this point forward compared to in the couple of years of the past? We've had a loved one who's had two 5150s in more recent years, and while the OCSD deputies responded with amazing professionalism, quite clearly, our loved one has, who had mental health issues, probably needed somebody that was closer to, that knew about mental health. At this point, when you're talking about the clinician, what can we expect in terms of difference with how mental health calls were responded to in the past versus going this point into the future?
So like when I showed you the mapping, the way it's set up right now, when a call comes into 911, the only resource that the dispatcher has access to is just to dispatch a deputy. Somebody's in crisis, they need help, the deputy goes there, and then the deputy addresses the situation. Like I said, they only receive that limited amount of training. Now we've expanded that training, so all the deputies will have a minimum of 16 hours. So they'll be able to identify, hey, this person's experiencing a mental health crisis, I need to step back, de-escalate the situation, find out what this person's problem is. And these calls take time, and that's one thing with us, we like to get in there and handle things quickly. With a mental health call, you've got to slow things down and give that person time to relax, so that you can move forward. And so we want to make sure all of our deputies are trained, so when they do have to respond, they know how to address the issue. And then when I talked about the steering committee, we're looking at putting in place different options, so that when you do call 911, we're going to be training our dispatchers to be able to recognize the mental health crisis, and then decide what is the most appropriate response. So if there's no public safety element, the person isn't threatening somebody's life, they're not threatening, immediately threatening themselves with a weapon, then there's no real need for law enforcement to be there. So who's the next option that we send? We're exploring a different, few different options, possibly using the fire department, because, you know, this is more of a medical issue. So what we would look at doing is possibly sending the fire department a paramedic unit to address that, and having law enforcement stand back and not be at the scene, and let fire department triage it and try and get this person connected with services. If they need our help, then we'll show up if it gets to that level. We're also working with HCA to expand their response, so that our dispatcher will be able to send it over to the healthcare agency, and they'll be able to dispatch one of their resources to handle the situation. And that's really what that steering committee is about, is identifying what resources are available. identifying what resources are available and at what time they would be appropriate to send to that call. Ideally, we talk about that co-responder. We would like to have that built into our system, so that when it does mandate a law enforcement response, hopefully, that deputy comes with a clinician. And so, they get there, they arrive on scene, they're both able to assess the situation, and the clinician may be able to tell the deputy, you know what, I'm good with this one. Go ahead and step back, and I'll take the lead. And the deputy's in the background while the clinician handles the call. And because they're, they are only designated for these types of calls, it's not like they're rushing because they got to go get to another call. This is their job, is dealing with these types of incidents. And so, that would be ideal for us, because we can step back and let that professional take care of that portion of it. And then, if it does raise to a level, like we said, where they need help, the deputy is right there to assist them. And so, ideally, that's what we're looking for, is us not being the primary responder. You know, like I said, we'd like to get out of it, but we'll never be able to 100% remove ourselves. But we want to make sure when we do respond, we are able to address it appropriately, our deputies are well-trained, and then we're able to access appropriate resources.
Captain, you had a high visible case in Mission Viejo recently. Maybe if you just touch on what happened there and the successful outcome versus what might have happened years ago, how the team handled it versus how traditional deputies may have handled it.
So, are you talking about the one at the shopping center?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to talk about that one? So, I'll let, I'm going to let Sergeant Chris Kiltz talk about this, because he was actually at that incident. And so, the Mission Viejo one at the shops?
So, initially, we received a call, it's a Priority One call, to respond Code Three. Apparently, a security guard was doing his patrol checks up in the parking structure of the Mission Viejo Mall, up on the fourth floor level. And when he was doing his walkthrough, he noticed a female who was sitting up on the wall, and it appeared that she was going to jump over the wall. So, he called 911. And deputies, we'd actually just finished doing some work down in that area, so we were nearby. My deputies responded. They were there on scene almost immediately. And like the captain described, we assessed the situation. One of my deputies who works Mission Viejo had already had previous contact with her, so he's already familiar with her and some of the crisis and personal things that she had been dealing with. So, he was able to establish that dialogue with her. And another one of my deputies was along with him as well. So, the Mission Viejo deputy continued his dialogue with her. And so, one of the things that they were able to do, and sometimes it's just developing that personal connection with these people that are in crisis, and finding out what the real core of the situation is, and connecting with them and identifying that and establishing their trust, our trust, their trust in us, that we're actually there to help. So, we just keep everybody back. It's not like the normal calls where we're all kind of rushing up, and there's a whole, you know, bunch of officers and everything. So, we keep everybody back and keep everything pretty low-key. So, after some communication with her, it ended up being just as simple as her just wanting a soda. And they were able to talk her down and get her over and sit her down. And like I said, the Mission Viejo deputy was working our co-responder unit that day, so he had the clinician with him. So, she was already on scene, and she was able to talk to her and provide her those resources that she needed and get her, get her the help that she needed almost immediately. So, it was actually an ideal, perfect situation. And, you know, we, you know, didn't lose her that day. We were able to save her life. And these guys did a great job, you know, helping her out and communicating with her. And the system as a totality was able to work well with what we've tried to put together here. And she received her help from the doctors in the hospital. And I think she's doing much better now, from what I understand.
Great. Thank you, Sergeant. All right. Couple more questions, and we'll let the captain sneak out.
Thank you. I'm Rona Henry. And I'm wondering, well, first of all, I'm really glad that you're trying different methods. I've heard in other cities, they've tried pairing or having more mental health professionals going out on these calls. And one of the things I've heard is that sometimes seeing an officer in a uniform or seeing the sheriff's police car, or the car, sheriff's car, can be triggering, and there's trust issues. So, I'm just wondering, how are you handling that issue in these cases? And how many clinicians, I may have missed it, but how many clinicians do you have on staff or contracting? And what additional resources are you finding that you need? Because I've heard of some situations where the homeless, they're given resources, but they're being told to go to shelters that are like in another county. So, what are you seeing in terms of the landscape? And what kind of more resources do you think this program needs to be effective?
So, there's several different programs that exist throughout the country. The one you're referring to is the In Cohoats Program, which is out of Eugene, Oregon, which Eugene is unique, because it's a city that's isolated on its own. We're a little bit different here in Orange County, because you have a bunch of cities that are butted up right against each other. So, it creates kind of a different dynamic. And so, that response model is something we've discussed as part of the steering committee and where that would fit in on that map, whether it should be falling under the law enforcement response or it should be something that's under the healthcare agency as one of their available types of resources that could be sent out. And so, it's something that's not off the table, and it's part of that discussion. And there are, you know, you look at San Antonio PD, which is the big one that puts their officers in plainclothes, doing what we're doing, but in plainclothes. And, you know, we're open to looking at those. We're actually traveling to other cities. We're going to be going up to Portland end of August to go, they have a behavioral health unit that's been established for quite some time. So, we're actually going to go up there and spend a couple of days with them. The deputies are going to be going out with their officers and their clinicians, because the idea is we want to go learn from all of these different agencies that already have these well-established programs and bring the best parts of those programs back here to Orange County. And we're not traveling there as the Sheriff's Department. The healthcare agency is sending their people with us, because this is a collaboration. This isn't Sheriff's Department on its own program. We don't succeed without our partners. So, without those clinicians, this bureau goes nowhere. And so, we have to have the commitment of these other partners. And that's really what that, we talked about that steering committee. It's that partnership and commitment to working on this together. And so, we really haven't ruled out anything as an option. It's what the collaborative group will decide is the best thing for Orange County. So, one of the things that comes up quite frequently is the homeless situation in South Orange County. And there is a federal ruling, Martin versus Boise, which I'm sure you're probably aware of. And the way that's interpreted and the way it works here in Orange County and the way the federal court system has interpreted for Orange County is we're split up into three what are called SPAs, service planning areas. And so, if you do not have a shelter, adequate shelters in your service planning area, you are not allowed to enforce anti-camping ordinances. And so, that creates problems, obviously, because if you have somebody that pops a tent in your city on the sidewalk or on a public property, you cannot do anything about them. You have to allow them to remain in that area. So, what we do is we go out, we'll offer them services. And there are service providers that we work with that have access to other types of shelter to get them off the street. But when it comes to a large homeless shelter that allows you to conduct that enforcement portion of it, it doesn't exist down here in South Orange County. And so, up in North County, which is where I was at before, they've built shelters, and they now have the ability to enforce anti-camping. So, it's changed the dynamic a little bit up there. But there's a need for a number of things, like we talked about. Shelter is just one piece of it. And so, for us, what we're looking at doing is really growing this bureau and bringing on additional clinicians, having additional deputies that are dedicated to that co-responder unit to be able to start addressing those underlying issues that are causing this problem to exist in the first place.
Hello. Carla Reina. And I had a question about the platform or the system that you guys are using to communicate amongst each other.
So, are you talking about how we document the contacts? Or?
Yeah. You mentioned that there was some kind of platform or a system where you would all be able to log into and communicate.
So, you're talking about the CarePlus program?
Okay, yes.
And so, the county had, it used to be called SOCDS, which was the county's data integration plan. And they use IBM was, the Watson Care Manager was the platform that they used to build this system. And what it does is it doesn't remove data from the different silos of services. What it does is create a virtual client record. So, it's able to look at all of these different systems and create a virtual record that's kind of like an index. And so, with this virtual record, you're able to see what types of services this person is receiving. And there's actually an Assembly Bill 210, which allows for the sharing of information specifically for conducting outreach for these individuals. So, we have to sign MOUs and disclosure agreements. And there's only a few people on our staff that are actually allowed to participate in that multidisciplinary team, as it's called, to be able to case manage these individuals, because that information is, it's strictly dictated by the law that it can only be used for outreach and for linking these people with services.
Hi, Robert Henry. I understand the concerns with determining between mental health and aggressiveness. Has there anything in the process built in to handle people who are mentally ill or are taking abusive drugs, and they have their property of it, you know, not exactly near them where they're, when they were contacted? So, is there anything in the program that makes, that will allow their stuff to be secured, so that it doesn't get thrown away and it doesn't get tossed away, so that those people will be less aggressive towards being confronted about their issues?
So, if it's, if we're talking about a homeless individual, our policy is the way they're written, we are mandated to take care of their bulk property. So, if they're unable to take their property with them, obviously, we'll look for a responsible party that can hold their property for them. If a responsible party is not available, we'll work with the local city. A lot of our cities have, the deputies have partnerships with Public Works, to where they'll actually take the property, and Public Works will store the property for 90 days for that individual, so they know when they get out, they can go pick up their property. If there's not that relationship, then what the deputies will do is they'll actually book it in as bulk property. And so, it will be held at our property evidence room until the time that they can come pick it up. But we will never leave their property behind. Our policy dictates that we will make sure their property is secured.
Your comment about where after they're treated and/or sobered up, you send them back to where they were found. So, is there a side step where you will take them to their property and then take them where they were found?
So, once we hand them off, specifically if we take them to Bwell, once we hand them off, then we're no longer involved in the process. So, what we'll do is when we drop them off, if their property has been either booked in or secured somewhere, we provide them with the information on how to recover their property. We have talked to Bwell about it, and they have entertained, and I'm not sure if they're doing it now or not, taking them to go get their property and then taking them back to where they were picked up at. But that we're not involved in that part of the process. Once we hand them off, then they're in the hands of the community that provides services to them.
Zitraya from Lake Forest here. First of all, thank you guys for the hard work and having an open mind, looking at the core, the problem here. Is there going to be a direct phone number or an email address or somewhere where we can contact the bureau? I also have a loved one who's been taken on a 5150 twice now in the last couple of years and then probably due for another one. But there was never a follow-up, which I know would definitely would have helped him. But is there going to be a place where you can register and?
So, there's a couple of different outlets. So, obviously, the healthcare, Orange County Healthcare Agency is the one that provides services for people with mental health issues. And so, they have an, OC Links is their phone number. If you dial it out on the phone, OC Links, that will get you connected to them. And then, you can also access them online if you go to HCA and look up OC Links. For us, if you wanted to get ahold of us, we have an email address. It's bhb@ocsheriff.gov. You can shoot us an email, and we can follow up with our clinician. But my recommendation is to go to HCA first. And if you feel that you're not getting through or you need additional help, shoot us an email, and we can connect with them on our end.
This is going to be the final question for Captain Wilson.
Hi. I'm Wayne Dunn, citizen of Lake Forest. I have been helping at Mary's Kitchen, which is a homeless food shelter in Orange, California. What was the point in time count for homeless in Lake Forest in 2019? Do you have that number?
I do not have it on me right now. As you know, there was supposed to be an additional point in time count this year, but it got canceled because of COVID. So-
Right. That's why I didn't ask for this year. I asked for 2019.
Yeah. I don't have it on me. I have it back at the office.
Okay. And how many shelter beds? Do you know, is it over 100?
You know what? I couldn't honestly answer that right now without looking at the stats.
Okay.
It was about 70.
It was about 70?
Yeah.
Okay. How many shelter beds do we have here in Lake Forest?
I'll let one of your deputies that work here answer that question.
Deputy Castro. I'm the BHLO for the City of Lake Forest. We do not have a shelter here in the City of Lake Forest.
Okay. So, the issue we're having at Mary's, 120 people every single day coming to get food, no place to go. There are SAP shelters, one in Buena Park, one in Placentia, both over 100 beds, no beds available. We have 120 people with no place to go. We know when you hire case managers, they can only do 20 or 25 cases. If we have 70 homeless, that takes three case managers just to get them all taken in, all with the intake. And then, there's no place for them to go, because there are no shelters in South County. Why can't we, in Lake Forest, build a shelter to help house these people? We're getting, I take it, part of this funding is from the block grant that just got released?
So, we're not, the Sheriff's Department isn't involved in the shelter portion of it. We're not providers of services. So, that would be something to ask either your Lake Forest elected officials or the county.
So, you do provide services, but we don't want those services usually, because San Ana's not a good place to spend the night in your jail. But this is a great transition to have our local team start talking about it, because we have a councilman here. And as the captain said, he's looking at the overview of the county, so he's not really familiar with our local policies and things like that. So, let's thank the captain and give him a round of applause. Captain, thank you very much for being here. I know you've got another engagement, so we've got the rest of the team, and then Mayor Pro Tim Bacainio's got great experience working with homeless individuals as well. So-
All right. Thank you. I appreciate you inviting me here today. And if you guys have any further questions, feel free to reach out to us. Like I said, bhb@ocsheriff.gov. Feel free to send us an email if you have any further questions. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Captain. Councilman, I don't know if you want to give some of your thoughts about the state of individuals experiencing homelessness in Lake Forest?
Sure. So, to answer the question about the homeless here in the city, of that 100 and, what'd you say? How many, was that Mary's Kitchen?
We have 120.
How many of them will take shelter right now? That's the issue, is we have a big problem with service resistance. So, for us to build a shelter, we approached it.
Deputy Castro, maybe you and Deputy Lumu, who work with the homeless every day in Lake Forest and establish some relationships, maybe you guys can reflect a little bit on what you see out there and some of the work we do. I will say, the City of Lake Forest, in addition to the two homeless liaison officers, we've a contract with Mercy House, which of course is a nonprofit team of social workers that work with our homeless deputies. So, Deputy Castro, maybe if you want to go on a little bit and then come back to the Mayor Pro Tim.
So, what you said, that we do not offer any-
So what you said, that we do not offer any services or anything, that's, that's not correct. We do. The city currently has two full-time deputy sheriff, that's myself and my partner Deputy Lumu, along with Sergeant Kills and two other deputies who are not necessarily for the city, but they work for Southeast, that is Lake Forest, Mission Viejo, Ranches Santa Margarita and Incorporated. So our job is essentially to go out there, handle any homeless related issues in the city, provide outreach and enforce. So out of, and I'll give an example, I've been doing this, this is not my first day on the job. I've been with, with the Sheriff's Department for the past 11 years. I've been with the City of Lake Forest, going on seven years now. I've been doing the homeless almost for four years. And out of, I'll give an example, out of 100 people that I come in contact with, maybe 95 will deny my services, okay? Five people are maybe, okay, yeah, let me think about it, you know? So it's not necessarily that, yeah, we don't have a shelter, we're not offering resources. No, there's plenty of other resources, not, not only that, but then we partnered with Mercy House. I don't know if you know, I mean, I know you're in the City of Orange, but the city just signed, extended the contract with Mercy House, which is a nonprofit, basically. And we go out on a daily basis, out seeking homeless, offering resources. I mean, I can tell you that for the past, within the last six months, we've housed 18 homeless. We provided services for 18 homeless. So yeah, that's, I don't know if you want to touch on anything else?
Yeah, like my partner said, and one of the big problems that we run into is service resistance. Whether it's drug abuse, mental health, and the vast majority of the people that are in that category, again, that's not all of the homeless we deal with, but in that category, they don't want to have rules imposed on them. They don't want to be in by a certain time, have someone tell them when to wake up, where they have to go, et cetera. The people that we do encounter that are open-minded to services, it's actually pretty easy. Tiara from Mercy House is a great resource to the city. Like my partner said, we've housed numerous people. And that's because of Mercy House's relationships with other service providers. Whether it's rehab, where they go into a different program in a different county or somewhere even locally, and then they're able to get into a short time, whether it's an apartment, somewhere where they get partial rent paid or even into more permanent housing. It's, it's a delicate situation because as my partner said, the majority of the people we come into contact with every day don't want us to talk to them. And we're trying to break down those barriers and not be seen as, you know, we're the law, you have to do what we say so much. And as the story that my sergeant told earlier, we try and relate on a more personal level. Because, because of the case law, Martin Russ Boisey, we're not out there ticketing people, citing people, arresting people for any status violations. Someone could literally put a tent in the middle of this complex here. And because it's city-owned property, we could not enforce any anti-camping laws. So we, we, and has that happened in Lake Forest? Yeah, absolutely. And so we try and work around that on a, on a personal level. What, what can we do to help get you off the street? What is, what is it that you want? And sometimes it's, you know, you know what, deputy, I'm, I just really need a smoke right now, man. I'm, I'm having a really bad day, I'll get my stuff, I'll talk to Tiara from Mercy House, but can, can you help me get a smoke or a soda or whatever the case may be? And that's part of the training that we're going to, is helping us to establish those connections, again, on a personal level. And yeah, of course, we still have to be, you know, deputy sheriffs and enforce laws as needed and deal with crimes as they come up. But it's, it's a very, it's a vast, complex problem. And we don't, there's no one simple solution, even if we built a shelter, it's, it's, it's much, it's a much bigger problem than that.
Thank you. So what I wanted to point out also is when, when I started the homeless program, it was just me. I was Lewis without Clark. Fast forward nine years and it was just me, I had zero support, I had no budget. I had, they told me to go find the ugliest car and the worst car in the lot, and that was my new car. And I drove around and just tried to learn. I went to different cities and I worked with Wayne Cody. He and I, we crossed paths a couple of times. And he'll tell you that any one of the homeless that I dealt with, I took care of. But now that we have the Behavioral Health Unit or Bureau, it's, it's, the Sheriff's Department and the county has made huge strides to, from nine years ago when I started. So to answer your question, I, I couldn't tell you when we're going to build a shelter and where it's going to be built. But that's a question that I get all the time. But you know, you're, you're asking me for something that I, I can't tell you what, I don't have an answer to. So, but you know, they're, to see what they're doing now, from what it started as, just me and trying to figure it out, we've made huge strides and I think they're doing a great job.
Mayor Pro Tim or deputies, maybe you can talk a little bit about public interaction with homelessness. I know the city, we've had a campaign about trying to discourage people from giving spare change and trying to direct people to get help from the agencies that can provide full help. So what are some of the things the public can do to help those experiencing homeless that don't contribute to enabling the behaviors?
So you're right, we give, give a hand up, not a handout. If you want to give money, give to one of these organizations, to Mercy House, to, what was it, Age Well or, I'm sorry, B-Well. You know, that's, that's where you give your money to. If you give the money directly to, to a homeless person, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to help them. When I was a homeless officer, I was forever giving money out of my pocket to, to some, some homeless just because, you know, I, I, I wanted to build a rapport with them. And, but if you do want to give, give to these organizations.
Or not, but a lot of the homeless that you see typically standing on the corners, they're not even from the city. They come from Anaheim, they come from other cities in Santa Ana to Lake Forest. And you want to know why exactly, we ask them, why is it that you guys don't ask for money in Anaheim? Well, people give us more money over here. People are rich over here, so we get more money, so we come over here. So that's something that just backs what Pequeno just said. So just donate to these other nonprofits, you know, do not encourage homeless to be panhandling because a lot of the times, you know, and there's plenty of times that we responded, people are on the center median, homeless get hit. We had already probably two to three within the past year that were run over by cars and, you know. So just be very mindful of that.
It's sometimes uncomfortable to see someone experiencing homeless. Should people be afraid or homeless people committing a lot of crimes and impacting lives that way? Or is it a safety issue? Are homeless individuals in the community a safety issue for the rest of us who live here? Should we be afraid of the homeless people? Or what kind of crimes might come about and what can we do about that?
So just remember that I'm not going to say that every single homeless that you see on the streets is dangerous. But just be aware that most of the homeless population, based on my personal experience working in the city for the past four years, dealing strictly with homeless, a good 90%, 95% of them have a substance abuse related issue. So just be very mindful if you come along with the homeless. And not, not necessarily just because substance abuse, but mental health. You know, a lot of them, they're schizophrenic, so a lot of times they, you might be just walking right next to them and they might think that they're following you, they might attack you. So just be very, very mindful.
I've got more questions, but anybody else? As the city's PR guy, I just want to say this building was built with zero tax dollars. The developers that built the houses contributed a per fee amount that allowed construction of the civic center and the sports park because that's what residents early on, 20 years ago, the city said, we want to rezone the land, allow more housing. The residents said, okay, we want some community facilities. So Lake Forest, one of the largest debt-free cities in the country, just wanted to throw that out there.
So let, let me just put something out. So when we start, when we talk about homeless, okay, there's, you have your chronic, your transitional and your episodic, right? So you usually probably see the chronic and the transitional. But how about the, the homeless that we can house right now, right? Not just in a shelter, but in a home. What, do you know what the average age of the homeless is? No, we're talking about the broad brush. What's the average age of the homeless? Yes. Yeah, but, okay, but what's, what's the average age of the homeless? It's 11 years old. Okay, when people think of homeless, they think of the person that's, that's begging for money, that's, that's down on their luck. But it's 11 years old. So when we talk about homeless, let's talk about the, the whole thing, okay? That, that's what it is. Well, like I said earlier, there, there's truth to that. But what I said earlier, when LA, San Francisco and Seattle spend a billion dollars a year, how many homes can a billion dollars build? But yet those three cities experience, have the highest number of homelessness in the country. So simply building shelters is not going to fix homelessness. Like Captain Wilson said, we have to address the underlying conditions.
So I think you guys are definitely in the right direction and I commend you for that. Obviously, things have changed a lot in the last decade about people's views of, of mental health. And it seems to me that a couple of, number one, I have to agree that the homeless that you see are probably the homeless that do have issues like drug issues, alcohol issues. I, I agree with that. However, I work with several nonprofits that are housing homeless families. And they make, the homeless families in Orange County that are just people who are a hard luck story, who have lost their job, who have had some kind of medical illness. And so I, I hate to see everybody put in one bucket here, which is I'm kind of feeling like, when that is definitely not the case. And I'm not trying to demean what you're saying. I, I totally respect that that's who you're working with. But there's a huge population out there that's really unseen, I, I think we, we can't forget are there.
That's, that's the fourth category that I didn't talk about, was the unseen homeless.
Right, and so it seems to me that because this is such a huge mental health issue and you only have to be in, live in your car, which I work, I'm a senior citizen in Lake Forest for a year who was living in her car, but she wasn't old enough to get social security, so she wasn't, you know, couldn't get anywhere. I think number one, you can live in your car for two weeks and all of a sudden you're having mental health issues. I mean, it's not something, you're trying to survive from day to day to day. You're just trying to get from Monday to Tuesday. Figure out where you're going to go to the bathroom, where you're going to eat, where you're going to take a shower, if you've got enough money for gas. And so it seems to me that to make this program really successful, you need to be pushing, you need to be pushing for a lot more mental health support so that you have many more people. And to me, that's the office of the Public Health Office for Orange County that seems rather dysfunctional sometimes. But I think that is something that the Sheriff's Department should definitely consider doing. And then secondly, as a city, I would suggest that you hold some United Way Homelessness 101 classes to educate the public as to how the reality of the homeless situation is today. Thank you.
So something that Captain Wilson spoke about, and I don't, he didn't, he didn't totally talk about when he was talking about these clinicians that the, that the county sends. Do you have clinicians 24/7 or are they just regular hours? No, I mean, other than the CAT team?
Just the hurt team right now.
Right, so how many of those?
It's, it's, we have two and it's two deputies, one day a week right now. But we're trying to expand that out to seven days a week.
Okay, so when, when I was doing the homeless program, I had to wait till the county mental health opened in the morning and they shut down at a certain time in the evening. So if I got a call at four o'clock in the morning, I had to wait four hours. So now hopefully, and you're right, I mean, the, the county, if they're going to spend money, especially for the mental health, that that's where they need to spend the money is paying these clinicians. And you're going to probably double staffing with staff comes, or with, with people comes salaries. And so it's going to cost money. And it's a huge task for them. But something, back in 2013, the under sheriff at the time, his name is John Scott, and he and I were talking about the homeless, he goes, he asked me how it was, how it was going. And I said, you know, I've only put two or three people into shelter. And he told me the story about the little boy and the starfish. Have you guys heard that story? You've heard it? So this little boy goes out to the ocean after a huge storm, or this older gentleman does, and he sees this little boy throwing starfish into the, into the water. And he asks the little boy, what are you doing? He says, well, storm blew all these starfish onto the shore and the sun's out and it's going to kill all these starfish. So I'm, I'm throwing them back in the water. He said, this, this beach is littered with thousands and thousands of starfish. Do you really think you can make a difference? The little boy looked at that old man, picked up a starfish, threw it in the water and he goes, I made a difference for that one. So we're not going to be clearing, cleaning the whole beach, but these gentlemen are doing them one starfish at a time. So I think they, they deserve a round of applause, right?
Just real quick to add on top of that from a little bit of what the captain was saying. So with our co-responder team, I think that's a little bit of what you were referring to with our PERT team. Right now, it's just one day a week with two deputies and two clinicians. So we're working on expanding that out to seven days a week. So it's just based on the funding and they're, they're working on that. And getting the, the staffing for that as well to, to hold those positions. So that is in the work and that's what we're working on expanding out to, to fulfill the obligations of our Bureau and what we set out to do. And just a, just a little quick story from what you brought up with the, some of the homeless, what'd you call? What was the term? Unseen. Right, so just an example of that, a couple of weeks, we do encounter these folks every now and then. And most of the time, it turns out to be a success story, so we're able to help them. So there was this young lady that was experiencing a crisis and we received the call, we responded there. So apparently what had happened is that she had lost her job and her child's father had left her and so she was experiencing a crisis. So we, we ended up talking to her and just kind of identifying what was, what was upsetting her and what, what was going on. And we were able to determine that she was actually newly homeless. So we reached out to Tiara at Mercy House and explained the situation to her. And she was real good about making contact with her. And we're still following up on that to, to find out the outcome. But she, it did sound positive that she was going to get housing. So she's not like a regular where she's staying out on the street. She had just experienced some crisis and some tough situations in life to where things kind of took a downturn. But we, with our encounter with her, we were able to connect her with those resources and hopefully she's found shelter or the, the resources in order to get her life back on track and help her out with her child. So that was, that was kind of one of those success stories that we had. Most of the time with what the guys were talking about are the, the folks that are dealing with the substance abuse, or the, the regulars, the, the, the ones that don't want shelter, that want to stay on the street. But even though that's the situation and we encounter these, these guys on a regular basis, we still do offer them shelter and the resources when we do come into contact with them because there might be that one day or that one time where they're like, yes, you know what, I'll take it today. And that has happened, so we, we do strive for that. And that's, that's our objective towards dealing with these guys. It's just not, well, they're a lost cause and, you know, we're just dealing with him today and if he's breaking the law, we're going to deal with that. That's, that's not our, that's not our objective. It's to still continue this outreach and maybe that day is the day that they're going to take it and they, they, you know, move forward and taking their life in a, in a different direction. Anything to add?
Yeah, just to touch on that, I mean, I know we started a little bit with negativity and, and all that. But like you're saying, you know, I mean, there's a lot of homeless, there's a lot of success stories that we have, you know, from housing full families that we found in the creek, you know. You know, people that had their kids taken away because substance abuse, you know, they got rehabilitated, were able to get them into a house with their kids. I mean, there's plenty of those. You know, I don't know if you guys remember, there's a lady that was, had, was camping over here on Dimension in Lake Forest. Did anybody see her? Like she had all her belongings spent out. I mean, that's one of the females, she was evicted from the hotel, the Promenade, I think it's called, is it different right now? Is it the Holiday Inn now? You know, she was evicted from the hotel and we found her. She was service resistant. It took us like maybe 10 times on a span of two days to get her into a hotel and finally get her onto a program. So there's plenty, you know, there's plenty of success stories, you know. So I just want you guys to know that we're very dedicated. Myself, along with my partners, we're dedicated. I mean, if there's somebody who needs help, we want to help them out. So yeah, just want to touch on that.
So some of the, so the resources that we do provide for the city of Lake Forest are we have two full-time deputies. And included in my team is a deputy from Mission Viejo and a deputy from Unincorporated. So as a whole, that doesn't isolate us to any of those particular cities. We work together as a team for, you know, whether it be Lake Forest, Mission Viejo or Unincorporated. We have aerial resources, we have off-road resources. They do go out and initiate contact with these folks. We, and we also respond to radio calls. But we're going into all areas, but you do have an entire team of deputies and resources from the Sheriff's Department that are out looking for these folks and responding to calls to help them with the resources and the outreach that they need. So just so you know what we're providing as well. It's just not two deputies, it's an entire team and an entire department along with our healthcare partners.
I appreciate what you're doing as far as addressing the behavioral health issues. Does your outreach and your going into the community include looking for people who are living in cars? Because that has just increased greatly, the parking lots in the area as well as side streets. And then the second part of my question, is there any thought or plan to be opening up the Arbor area where the fencing is up and to allow?
So on the first question, then I'll let the councilman answer the second. On the first, the homelessness typically starts with people transitioning into their vehicles. So those are some of the calls that we get. Whenever we receive those calls, we'll respond out to those folks and talk to them and discuss what their needs are, what the situation is and see what resources we can provide them. So that is, that is kind of where it starts and we do get those calls. And I know that whenever we're out doing our patrols, you know, we're looking for those types of things. And also whenever we get the calls, we'll make contact with them and help them out. Because at that point, it's still fresh. It's not like some of the other people that we're dealing with regularly where they've been out there for years. They've been homeless for months to years where these people are pretty fresh. And if we can catch them early, we can get them back on track with, you know, whatever the situation is and things that they need pretty quickly. And a lot of times that will help them get back on their feet pretty quickly.
So the Arbers, what the city has done, they've put it out to bid for, to redo the Arbers. On the, as you're coming in from the five on the right-hand side by the brew, the city's going to be leasing that area to the brew and it's going to now be part of Brew's property. On the other side, on the Wells Fargo side, they're going to do some wrought iron fences. They're going to take down that fencing and that fencing's been bothering me for the last two years. And that was my, one of my first questions when I got on council, is when is it going to go away? But they're going to, they're going to, they're going to make it nice. They're going to put some wrought iron fences and make like a little garden in there. So, and I'm going to say by this fall, they should start construction. And also this fall, we are going to do a homeless 101 town hall in my district. So I, you know, I get that we need to help the homeless, but you know, at some point, we just have to figure out where. And you know, if you go to another city, what do you hear? NIMBY, right? Not in my backyard. So you know, hopefully, hopefully we can figure something out. As Mr. Cody will tell you, that my heart is with the homeless, but you know, I also have to answer to the citizens and the residents of Lake Forest.
Construction company. So they just awarded the contract for the construction and it'll be beautiful area.
MRW.
Yeah, and the wrought iron fence will be high, so it'll be really attractive to look at, but there won't be the ability for people to go inside of the Arbers on the Wells Fargo side any longer. On the other side, as the Mayor Tim said, it's going to be leased to Brew and they'll do outside dining. We'll talk afterwards, sir, because we're about to wrap up. Just to be respectful at the time. So, so I just want to say two things. One, you heard again tonight several times just how complex this issue is. Oftentimes government, when they face a problem, they'll find another government that solved the problem and then adapt it to a local solution. And I don't really know anybody, anywhere, that has solved the issue of homelessness. And of course, in the Western states, as our law enforcement partners mentioned, the Martin v. Boise case has made it even more complicated for California, Arizona, the Western states. Working very hard on it, I encourage folks tonight, you heard it mentioned once or twice, the point in time count was canceled. That's done every two years, it's actually done nationally by HUD. It was canceled because of COVID like everything else. When it comes back, I encourage you to volunteer. They seek volunteers, it's very safe. Our deputies identify areas in the city. We gathered last year at South County Outreach at four in the morning. You go out with a team, you actually get to have a conversation with the people who are experiencing homelessness. There's, they give you questions you ask, a little app on your phone, but then you can continue the conversation. It's very insightful. Many of the people we saw in Lake Forest when I went were from Lake Forest or had some tie to the community. A lot of times you think it's people coming from elsewhere. And a lot of people had different issues. So it was very, very insightful. So I encourage you to watch for the point in time or the pit count and volunteer for that. And also, we have information, when you see someone experiencing homeless in the community, of course, if you ever feel threatened, call 911. But we have an app and a spot on our website that you can actually report someone experiencing homeless. And that's how we dispatch our deputies and our Mercy House team out there. So we have a smartphone app and then we have a website. If we have the smartphone app and it has a homeless, and then on our website, if you go to wwwasklakeforest.com, you can actually see one of the buttons there is homelessness. And you can click on that and put in all the details you want. That gets the information right to the people who need it. And also, if you care to, it creates a tracking record for you and you'll get a follow-up that yes, we went out and talked to the people. And I will tell you, the expertise of the gentleman to my left, 90% of the time that I send them a ticket saying, hey, somebody's been reported at this location, Sergio knows who it is and has talked to that person within the last day or two. I'll say, hey, there's a woman with her clothes all spread out and he'll say, yes, that's Lucy. She doesn't want help, but I'm going back tomorrow. So a great team over there that pays a lot of attention to this. So I'm going to wrap up. I thank you all for coming tonight. We'll put more information out through the Mayor Pro Tim about the homeless 101. And I want to thank the deputies and Mayor Pro Tim for being here tonight. And give the last word to the sergeant.
You know what, I just want to, I just want to congratulate these guys. These two guys that are working in your city are two of the most outstanding deputies, the most professional and caring. I couldn't ask for two better guys to supervise and oversee this program. But I just want you to know, you should feel lucky to have these guys. They're super knowledgeable, they care, they do a really, really great job. And I just want to commend them and I want you to know what you're getting with these two fellows right here, okay?